I'd like to call the October 14th meeting of the Board of Education to order. First item, invocation. Ms. Etheridge?
Good evening. I'm going to read one of the stories from "Don't Sweat the Small Stuff." Chapter number five, "Develop Your Compassion." Nothing helps us build our perspective more than developing compassion for others. Compassion is a sympathetic feeling. It involves the willingness to put yourself in someone else's shoes, to take the focus off yourself, and to imagine what it's like to be in someone else's predicament, and simultaneously to feel love for that person. It's the recognition that other people's problems, their pain and frustrations are every bit as real as our own, often far worse. In recognizing this fact and trying to offer some assistance, we open our own hearts and greatly enhance our sense of gratitude. Compassion is something you can develop with practice. It involves two things, intention and action. Intention simply means you remember to open your heart to others, you expand what and who matters from yourself to other people. Action is simply the what you do about it. You might donate a little money or time, or both, on a regular basis to a cause near to your heart, or perhaps you'll offer a beautiful smile and a genuine hello to the people you meet on the street. It's not so important what to do, just that you do something. As Mother Teresa reminds us, we cannot do great things on this earth, we can only do small things with great love. Compassion develops your sense of gratitude by taking your attention off all the little things that most of us have learned to take too seriously. When you take time, often to reflect on the miracle of life, the miracle that you are even able to read this book, the gift of sight, of love, and all the rest, it can help to remind you that many of the things that you think of as big stuff are really just small stuff, that you are turning into big stuff. Thank you.
Next, we'll have a pledge of allegiance, and Principal Whitney Bisbing from Moyac Elementary School will introduce the person who will lead us in the pledge.
Good evening. I'm proud to introduce to you Washington Bennett. He's a fifth grader at Moyac Elementary School, and Ms. Jones is class, and he's going to lead us in the pledge.
Would y'all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Washington. This month, our school's spotlight is on Moyac Elementary. Principal Bisbing?
Good evening. Real proud to have our boys and girls here with us from Ms. Jones's fifth grade. They have put together a really nice presentation about our school newspaper. That's something that's fallen by the wayside for a couple of years, but they've picked it back up and they're here and really excited to tell you about the things that they're doing. And the lady that's helping them with that is Teresa Burnett, so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Burnett.
Good evening. What we've done is we've taken the newspaper, I've assigned the fifth graders a role, we've broken it up into three parts. We have the reporters, the editors, and the publishers. Each class is given an assignment, they have to produce the paper. Our reporters do their job and we go on through, and they'll explain to you what each one of their roles were and how they were able to do it. We'll start with the reporter first, Ms. Emily.
My name is Emily, and I am the reporter for Panther Press. The first thing that we did was to choose a partner to work with. My partner and I had to brainstorm questions that we would like to ask the person we interviewed. Ms. Burnett helped us with scheduling each person to interview. After our interviews, we did a pre-write on our information, to put it in sentence form. Then we typed up final address on all of our questions to send to our editors.
And our editors can come up? Can you tell them what you guys said?
My name is Chase, and I am an editor for Panther Press. We observed and assisted the reporters during the writing process. We all, we collected all the papers from the reporters.
My name is Washington Bennett, and I am an editor for the Panther Press. Next, we made sure we understood what the reporters wrote. We took each interview and divided them into three important statements about each person, then took the sentences and wrote articles for each one.
And then we turned it over to our publishers. Publishers can come up?
Hi, my name is Zariah. First, we helped the reporters with typing and editing their information after the interviews.
Hi, my name is Chloe Oldacre, and I'm a publisher for the Panther Press. We divided the interviews into the sections of the newspaper that we had already designed.
We took turns dictating and typing up the newspaper, making sure to check our spelling often.
We typed up our final address to be copied.
Once they've done this, they've published the paper, we gave it to our volunteers, we copied them off for them. What we've done this month and next month will be Ms. Jones's class, then the following two months will be another teacher, so that all the fifth graders will get a chance to do it this year.
Will it be possible to send us a copy of the Panther Press?
We sent, we gave you all a copy today?
Yep. Bring it. I have so many pieces of paper on here.
And we'll be happy to send you one every month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get everybody from office.
Next, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next, work session update. We did have a special board meeting at 3:45 today where the board voted four to one not to remove a book from the high school library, and I will mention that Ms. Etheridge did vote against that, and the four of us voted for it. Then we had a work session, and we heard about a grading procedure from Sandy Kinzel, Assistant Superintendent. Then the Child Nutrition Director, Angela Rodriguez, updated us on the status of the child nutrition program, considering the government shutdown. Then next, we talked, or had Lori Trussell, who's our Finance Officer, talk to us about the 2013-2014 budget, and then heard from Ms. Scholler about the Golden Leaf Grant, which, you know, our commissioners are supporting, we're part of it, and hopefully we'll get some of that money. Then we heard from Superintendent Scholler about new teacher contracts, and that's because is it 2018, the legislature has done away with tenure?
That's correct.
Beginning that year, everybody will receive a contract that's not tenure. Okay, then, we heard about graduation date from Ms. Newburn, and I'm just going to let Thomas tell you about that one, it's the Student Board Members' report. And last, in the work session, we discussed when we're going to have our November work session and board meeting, and that's because it falls on Veterans Day, so we had to change that. And now I'm going to have Ms. Scholler, the Superintendent, tell you about our new administrative procedure for checking books out of the library.
Thank you, Dr. Dobney. Staff members, Paul O'Brien, along with media specialists, have developed a book checkout procedure for all of our schools, in which parents may choose one of three options if they opt in. The first option is the parents or legal guardians may generate a list of books the student is allowed to check out. Option two, parents or legal guardians may generate a list of books the student is not allowed to check out. Or option three, parents or legal guardians may approve or disapprove of each book before it is checked out, and that will happen through email. This procedure's going to be put in place immediately. We'll let parents know about it through Alert Now, and also we'll have it on our website.
Thank you. Next, Student Board Member reports. Thomas Poston, Rick Loggie, Katie Taylor, and Alexandra Carter.
Well, as Mr. Dobney, well, as Mr. Dobney mentioned, the decision on the graduation date has been made. There was a series of parent, teacher, and student surveys sent out, and there was Alert Now messages, and it was on the website, and students, as well as other respondees, parents and teachers, they, their responses leaned toward Friday. And this decision had to be made because of new laws that required seniors to take exams on the same timetable as everyone else. So, the last day of school was Wednesday, and graduation could not be held that day. So, long story short, the date of the graduation ceremony for the class of 2014 has been set for Friday, June 13, 2014, at 7:00 PM, and this will be held indoors of the CCHS Gymnasium. Seniors and their families will receive information regarding tickets and seating at a later date. Also at Curtick County High School, this week is Spirit Week. I saw some really cool costumes today, and I'm hoping we'll have some great participation throughout the rest of the week. That will culminate this Friday with homecoming, so I hope to see everyone there. It's going to be a really fun night, and should be a great game of football against the Bertie Falcons. Don't forget you're red. Also, in other schools around the county, elementary schools are looking at Red Ribbon Week and Bus Safety Week this month, and getting the elementary students excited about making positive decisions, so that's great. And also, over this past weekend, hundreds of elementary, middle, and middle school students attended the Civil War reenactment that took place right here in this historic area. Curtick County High School Tar Heel Junior Historians, as well as students from JP NAP Early College and community members, gave educational tours for students of the historic encampment. Now I'll turn it over to Rick.
So this month so far, early, underclassmen have been taking preparatory standardized tests, like the PLAN and PSAT, and the grading period for NAP ends on the 11th, and parent teacher conferences will be held on the 24th. At Jarvisburg Elementary, on September 21st, the Channel 13 meteorologist came and talked to the fourth and fifth graders about meteorology, and some of the students were able to appear on 13 News that evening. On October 1st, 20 teachers and administrators from Hurtford County Schools traveled to Jarvisburg to observe Daily Five in action, and on the 7th, at Jarvisburg Elementary School, it kicked off its first school-wide Book of the Year with Andrew Clement's Friendel. Students, parents, teachers, bus drivers, and the whole staff were able to read through the book together over the next three weeks.
Great, thank you. And I guess Katie and Alexandra will do their first report next month?
Yes, and thank you so much to Katie and Alex for helping us accumulate all this information. It's really nice to be working with them. I think this is their first full board member day, so congrats to them, and thanks.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Next item, Kids Walk for Kids with Cancer. Mary Kate Morgan?
Good evening, board and members of the community. For those of you who do not know me, I'm Mary Kate Morgan, and I am the North Carolina Chairperson for the Kids Walk for Kids with Cancer. "Do not withhold good from those whom it's due when it's in your power to act," Proverbs 3:27. This verse has become my motivation in my volunteer work with Kids Walk. I've been very blessed to have good health, but many kids aren't so lucky. Cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children. Approximately 13,000 new cases of childhood cancer are diagnosed each year. That makes 46 children being diagnosed daily, and this statistic is increasing. The saddest part is that despite these awful statistics, very little money is given by the federal government to support pediatric cancer research. Out of every dollar given by the federal government to cancer research, it is estimated that less than four pennies of that dollar go to all pediatric cancers. Children with cancer are suffering and dying, but I think we can change that. 100% of the funds raised by the Kids Walk for Kids with Cancer goes to pediatric cancer research and Memorial Sloan-Kettering Cancer Center in New York City. MSKCC is the oldest and largest cancer center in the United States, and they are tire, and they're work trying, they are trying tirelessly to develop new, less toxic treatments for children who have cancer, in hopes to eventually find a cure. I wanted to come tonight to thank you, board members, for all of your support in allowing us to use the schools as an outlet for our fundraising and publicizing our walk. This is going to be our fourth year, and I know that without the support of the schools and this whole community, Kids Walk would not be as successful as it is. This year, we have Kids Walk for Kids with Cancer teams at six schools in the school system. We have them at Currituck County High School, JP NAP Early College, Currituck Middle, Shawboro Elementary, Central Elementary, and Jarvisburg Elementary. Three of the elementary schools have had penny wars at the schools to raise money for Kids Walk. For those of you who are unfamiliar with the penny wars, they're where you put pennies in your jar to increase your score, and silver in the other class's jars to decrease their scores. Shawboro Elementary raised $1,300 doing such. Central raised $1,000, and Currituck Middle raised $700. JP NAP also had their penny war last week, and they're in the process of counting their money right now. Jarvisburg is having their penny war this week. All of this fundraising has led up to our Kids Walk for Kids with Cancer event this Saturday at the Currituck Judicial Center at 1:30. It will be a fun, family-friendly event, and people of all ages are welcome. We will have a brief program, walk four miles, and afterwards we will have snacks and fellowship. Again, thank you for your continued support, and I hope to see everyone at Kids Walk this Saturday.
Okay, Katie, or Mary Kate, excuse me. How much money, and I know it was some incredible amount that you gave us last year when you spoke, that you've raised?
Well, the last three Kids Walks together have raised $55,000, and then this year we're hoping to increase and get even bigger, so.
Wow, you ought to be very proud of yourself. And I know your mother, Amy, and Father Mel are very proud of you, too. Okay, next, field trip request. Ms. Scholler?
Yes, JP NAP, as well as Currituck County High School, are going to attend the North Carolina SAD Conference in Raleigh, November 15 through the 17th.
Okay, and that's both JP NAP and CCHS?
Yes.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, Exceptional Children's Teacher of Excellence. Doug Cowell, Director of Exceptional Children, will be presenting.
Appreciate the opportunity to speak to y'all. In September of 2013, the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Exceptional Children's Division called for Exceptional Children's Teachers of Excellence. We asked our school administrators to submit nominations for this Teacher of Excellence, and we had quite a few nominees. The overwhelming nominee and winner that was Ms. Margaret Pavy from Currituck County Middle School. So I'd like to have Ms. Pavy and Ms. Davis come up to the front, please. And I'll just say a few things about these, and then we'll present Ms. Pavy with her plaque, and then if Ms. Davis wants to say anything as well. The requirements for this award were, one, you needed to be a teacher in the Exceptional Children's Program; two, you needed to have taught for a minimum of five years; and then they had other qualifications, such as your students needed to show positive outcomes, you needed to be a leader in your school, you needed to be a leader in the county, and you needed to show professional ethics as well. Everything that, in my short time that I've been here, that I know about Ms. Pavy, she's demonstrated that, and then her colleagues as well have echoed that sentiment.
Like Mr. Toll said, it was easy for us to decide on Mrs. Pavy, for all the work that she does for the kids at Curtick County Middle School, not just for the kids in the Exceptional Children's Department, but she just steps in wherever she can, and wherever, whoever she can help, she helps them. So, yes, we're really proud of Ms. Pavy, and no Mrs. Godfrey, hands off.
So, we're going to present Ms. Pavy with this plaque that recognizes her as Curtick County's Exceptional Children Teacher of Excellence. She will be recognized at the Exceptional Children's, Exceptional Children's Conference in Greensboro, it's the 63rd conference. She will be an honorary guest at that conference, that'll be on Thursday and Friday, and they'll have a dinner, will she be honored there as well. Ms. Pavy, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Margaret.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toll, and Ms. Davis. Okay, next, principal appreciation. Superintendent Allison Scholler?
Good evening again. I'd also like to ask Ann Mackin, our HR Director, and Sandy Kinzel, Assistant Superintendent, to come assist, if you don't mind. For members, you may or may not be aware, but October is National School Principals' Month, so I'd like to take a few minutes to recognize our very important school principals. School principals take on many roles as chief leaders in their schools. They're responsible for the day-to-day management of facilities and grounds, financial operations, student scheduling, personnel, public relations, and discipline. Most importantly, school principals model instructional leadership and promote school reform, ensuring that all students are successful. The school principalship is one of the most demanding, yet one of the most rewarding professions around. We appreciate and sincerely thank each of our principals for their hard work, dedication, and countless hours given to our Currituck County students. So, principals, as I call your name, if you'll please come to the front and remain standing. Steve Blackstock? He is the principal of Jarvisburg Elementary School.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That'll be good. Whitney Bisbing, Principal of Moyac Elementary School?
Thank you. Congratulations.
Terry Godfrey, Principal of Shawboro Elementary School?
Congratulations.
Tommy Wilson, Principal of Knott's Island Elementary School?
Congratulations.
Dawn Belangia, Principal of Central Elementary School?
Congratulations.
Angel Lasher, Principal of Dr. W.T. Griggs Elementary School?
Congratulations.
Phil Lawes, Principal of Moyac Middle School?
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Steve Bassnight, Principal of JP NAP Early College?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Selena Harris, Principal of Currituck County Learning Center?
Thank you, Selena.
Thanks, Selena.
And Diane Newburn, Principal, Currituck County High School?
Thank you.
I love you very much.
Principals, we sincerely appreciate and thank you for everything you do. We know how tough your jobs are, and we just appreciate you, so thank you so much for being with us. Board members, the group, yes. Yeah, we're not quite finished. We have one more special presentation. The group standing before you represents the finest group of principals in North Carolina. From these principals, and that's the truth, from these principals, we have chosen our 2014 Wells Fargo Principal of the Year. Our candidate works hard to build relationships within the school and community, finding creative and engaging ways to involve families of students. Our candidate merits the respect of students, teachers, coworkers, and parents. She is developing productive young citizens through implementation of the leader in me. Our candidate has demonstrated the ability to improve achievement of students from various backgrounds and with differing capabilities. Please join me in congratulating Dawn Belangia from Central Elementary School. And Dawn will go on to the state level, it's regional level first, and then to the state level after that, Dawn. So, we do, we thank and congratulate all of our principals.
The winner's circle.
The winner's circle.
Yes.
Well, while they're coming up here to get their picture taken, being a former elementary principal and high school principal, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you for all the work you do and what you do for students in our county, and I know that the job can be very, very difficult.
Tight knock. Ball is up front.
Turn around here.
You got it. I'm going to be good at this, tight knock. I think we should put that in right in the center, too, Dick. Toll's good. Okay, there you go. Thank you. And one, just for the fun. Thank you.
Are you in it, Dawn? Are you in it?
Thank you.
No, but I'm smiling.
And you never.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next, public comment session, there was nobody signed up. Information items. Our next work session will be Wednesday, November 13, at 4:00 at the NAP Professional Learning Center, and our next board meeting will be Wednesday, November 13, 7:00, right here at the Historic Courthouse. Next, board member comments. Ms. Etheridge?
I would just urge everyone to go out to the homecoming this Friday night and cheer on the Knights. It should be a great game, great turnout, what we're expecting, and I had the pleasure of attending a game and really enjoyed it. A lot of team spirit, and I was thrilled to see that, so I urge you to come out Friday night.
Mr. Simmons?
Karen just cut me right off there. Homecoming week, big football game, we got a really good team this year, we got a throw-in team, which you don't see in high school football very often. Come out Friday night and let's support our homecoming.
Thank you. Ms. Craft?
Yes, I just want to say thank you to Moyac Elementary. My heart is there, y'all. Makes me want to come back, but not that bad. Laura and I talked together for a number of years, and please tell Chase, Washington, Zara, Chloe, and Emily how much we appreciate them coming, and Mary Kate's already left, but I just wanted to say she's doing a phenomenal job, too.
Ms. Scatters?
I just want to extend another congratulations to the principals. We do appreciate everything you guys do, not only the principals, obviously, the staff and everybody that falls below that, but it's great to have all of you guys out today and see you get recognized. And on top of that, I just want to add, I had a lovely visit to Knott's Island Elementary this past week with Mr. Wilson. Everything seems to be running great there, everybody seems happy. I got to see the kindergarteners go down for their very first book fair, which was exciting to see, to see all of them, they were ecstatic, so it was a really nice visit. So, everybody keep up the hard work, and we appreciate everything you're doing.
And since the last board meeting, I've visited Currituck County Middle School, and I went into probably 10, 12 different classes, saw kids just enthralled in the Chromebooks, you know, in each one of the classes, they were, you know, doing a really great job. I also went into Ms. Pavy's class to see her working with students, so, anyway, I'm glad.
While they're coming up here to get their picture taken, being a former elementary principal and high school principal, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you for all the work you do and what you do for students in our county, and I know that the job can be very, very difficult. Okay, there you go. Thank you. And one, just for the fun. Thank you. Are you in it, Dawn? Are you in it? No, but I'm smiling.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next, public comments session. There was nobody signed up. Information items. Our next work session will be Wednesday, November 13th, at 4:00 at the NAP Professional Learning Center, and our next board meeting will be Wednesday, November 13th, 7:00, right here at the Historic Courthouse. Next, board member comments. Ms. Etheridge?
I would just urge everyone to go out to the homecoming this Friday night, and cheer on the Knights. It should be a great game, great turnout, what we're expecting, and I had the pleasure of attending a game and really enjoyed it. A lot of team spirit, and I was, I was thrilled to see that, so I urge you to come out Friday night.
Mr. Simmons?
Karen just cut me right off there. Homecoming week, big football game, we got a really good team this year. We got a throw-in team, which you don't see in high school football very often. Come out Friday night and let's support our homecoming.
Thank you. Ms. Craft?
Yes, I just want to say thank you to Moyac Elementary. My, my heart is there, y'all. Makes me want to come back, but not that bad. Laura and I taught together for a number of years, and please tell Chase, Washington, Zara, Zara, Chloe, and Emily how much we appreciate them coming, and Mary Kate's already left, but I just wanted to say she's doing a phenomenal job, too.
Ms. Scatters?
I just want to extend another congratulations to the principals. We do appreciate everything you guys do, not only the principals, obviously, the staff and everybody that falls below that, but it's great to have all of you guys out today and see you get recognized. And on top of that, I just want to add, I had a lovely visit to Knott's Island Elementary this past week with Mr. Wilson. Everything seems to be running great there, everybody seems happy. I got to see the kindergarteners go down for their very first book fair, which was exciting to see, to see all of them. They were ecstatic, so it was, it was a really nice visit, so everybody keep up the hard work, and we appreciate everything you're doing.
And since the last board meeting, I've visited Currituck County Middle School. I went into probably 10, 12 different classes, saw kids just enthralled in the Chromebooks. You know, in each one of the classes, they were, you know, doing a really great job. I also went into Ms. Pavy's class, to see her working with students, so. Anyway, I'm glad to see that, you know, the students are using the Chromebooks, and it seems like they're getting a lot out of it, so it sounds like it was a good investment on the part of the board. And with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
A motion, we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.